On to 3.01, Stream. Mr. Wolf.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Baker, Ms. Bowler. Stream at 3L is a collaborative effort between Massaponics High School, Thornburg Middle School, and Riverview Elementary School to bring students together at all levels to learn about science, technology, engineering, arts, reading, and math. The Stream at 3L is comprised of elementary, middle, and high school teachers and students. Through collaboration of teachers, students at all levels have had a valuable experience through hands-on learning. I'd like to introduce the members of the Stream for a short presentation.
Good evening, everyone. School Board members?
Dr. Baker.
And Dr. Martin, Mrs. Bowler. It is our privilege to be here tonight and to share with you one of the highlights that we have brought about in our schools beginning this school year. Actually, let me back up. It started in May of last year as far as planning. And it went from STEM to STEAM to Stream. So, I want to introduce you. There are some members behind me of the Stream at 3L. And the idea evolved, so we began planning in May of 2014. The team used our newly-acquired Google apps that we're using within the school division. And we began to communicate and share ideas via that way. And we also had some meetings face-to-face over the summer. During one of those planning meetings, one of the students had asked before it became Stream, it was STEAM at that time, S-T-E-A-M. And she was sitting there because it was one of the coaches', the daughters. And she turns around and says, "Well, what about reading? We don't have reading." So, very quickly, we became Stream. So, we felt it was really important to put that in there, especially by the observation of one of our students. So, how did 3L come about? One morning, actually, I was thinking of one of the things that Mrs. Berger, our STEM coach at Riverview does, and with our elementary students. And it came to mind that what could we do to maybe include this and expand this at all three levels and start connecting that way? So, knowing some of the teachers at Thornburg Middle and at Massaponics High School, because Riverview feeds into those two schools, so I've had the privilege of working with some of our teachers as parents. So, knowing some of the people that worked at those two buildings, a thought came to mind. So, out went an email to Mrs. Schleibel, who is the coach at Massaponics High School, and Mrs. Nguyen, who is our middle school coach at Thornburg, and then Mrs. Berger, who coaches our STEM team, is what it used to be, but now it's Stream. So, the email went out. They quickly responded back. Let's go for it. And that's how the planning all started. In the fall, we started with 27 elementary students, 10 middle school students, and six high school students, with the idea that we've had mentoring that would be taking place as well. And we did a survey at the end of our last session back in the fall. And we decided, based on the survey results, we were going to reduce the number of students by elementary a little bit. So, that's where you see on the slide, we have now 18 elementary for the spring session, eight middle, and six high school. Our coaches, like I said, are Mrs. Schleibel from the high school, Tracy Fletcher, Mrs. Nguyen from Thornburg, and then Mrs. Berger from Riverview. We also had collaboration with other staff members. We had two of our ITRTs involved, Mrs. Wiseman and Mrs. Klaus. And also, we had one of our librarians, and she's here tonight as well, from Thornburg, Mrs. Ball. And then, our art teacher, Riverview, actually helped design the t-shirt that you see us wearing. So, the planning came about. And, oh yeah, by the way, we do have an honorary member, and that is one of your very own, Mr. Blaine. He came to every single session in the fall. And so, Mr. Blaine, we've made you an honorary member. And I know, Mrs. Shelley, and some of you others came as well, and we do appreciate that, because you're noticed when you're there. So, from that came our Stream. And we began planning our sessions. We coordinated our busing. Our middle school students and our high school students actually ride to Massaponics. Two sessions are held at Massaponics, the next two sessions at Thornburg, and then the other two sessions at Riverview. So, Thornburg and Riverview share a bus to Massaponics, and we each split that cost, minimal dollars. And then, when it's housed at Riverview, the two sessions, Riverview walks over, and then Massaponics just drives the students. And then Thornburg just walks over to Riverview. So, it worked out really well, you know, particularly with the three campuses being so close together. But enough of me talking. I want to move along, so you can hear from our students. So, Mrs., I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Berger, and then she's gonna, we're gonna hear from our students and their experiences.
I'm so excited to be involved in this. I've been doing STEM for seven years at Riverview. And when I saw this opportunity to merge three levels of learning together, not only have the elementary been mentees, they've been mentors. And the reaction of the high school kids, it's wonderful. You can't imagine having them work all together. I love this statement, "There is an ongoing need to encourage young people to take an interest in science-related subjects. STEM, STEAM, STREAM, activities are a unique opportunity to create excitement and interest in schools about science." Forbes Magazine just listed the 25 top jobs in the next century. And most of them were all in the STEM area. And as you see, we've got boys and girls involved. We've got all levels of academic levels. But when it comes to science and hands-on learning, this 3L is a perfect model. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Schleibel now, because we started this journey at Massaponics High School first.
Hello. I just want to say that I recently read an article that said that 40% of the kids who go into college as STEM majors don't hack it. When they get to college, they realize, wait a minute, the science is very different than some of the science that I've had in school, because it's not hands-on. It's not inquiry-based. And this opportunity for all of these students to get involved into something that is real science has been fantastic. So, I'm going to have one of the high school students come up and kind of share what we did at our session, in the Massaponics session. Can you just?
At the first session for Massaponics, we actually had a crime scene. And there were lots of little clues. And the kids all had to look at these clues and kind of try and take what they saw and, you know, figure out who had done it. They had a sheet. They gave like the different suspects and different things about these suspects. And so, they took what they knew, and they tried to determine who it was. But, like, in reality, there wasn't a specific answer. They had to take what they had found and make the best possible guess. There wasn't any set person who had done it, which was actually really cool, I think, for the kids to see. There's not always one answer, you know, because that relates to more than just, you know, the little crime scene. So, it's really interesting to see how, you know, everyone works. And it was, it was nice, so.
Okay, so, more about like our first meeting together. It was at MHS. And like, going off of what Jess said, I think it really helped, like, it was our first meeting, and we all met each other at the elementary, middle school, and high school level. So, we were just starting to get to know each other. And that certain activity helped us all, like, get to know each other and help us work together as a team. So, it did, it made our social, social, you know what I'm saying? Sorry. Yeah, it like, it helped us get to know each other more on a social level. It helped us, like, work that out. So, I'm like really nervous right now, like pretty sure everyone is. Um, but yeah. And like, on our second, second time we met up, which was two weeks after, I wasn't there. But I do remember that, like, we had, we figured out who was the person for, who created the crime, who did the crime. And, yeah, is this that? This is still in Miss Schleibel's room? Okay. But yeah, that's basically all I have to say. I'm going to leave now.
Well, this is, this slide is actually a gel electrophoresis, where you take a strand of DNA, and you run it through a machine that sends the different parts of the DNA to different, like, levels. And then, you take what you get, and you can create a strand of DNA, which is really fancy. So, for these little kids to be able to do that was really cool. And we all really enjoyed this, you know, chance to do these things that don't happen in normal school classroom settings. So, yeah, this is just the, running the electrophoresis again, which was really fun for all of us. And then, it was Thornburg.
We went at Thornburg Middle School. We had, the first meeting, we did aquaponics, as you can see on the slide. We cut six holes into a, a plastic jar. And we put five plants in five of the holes. And we put, and we left one open, so we could use that to feed the fish that we put in another plastic jar. And we grew the plants. We took the five plants. We took out the roots. We filled one jar up with the water and put the second jar on top of that. And the roots had the water, the roots absorbed the water from the, from the fish tank. And, and the plants grew. And we got to see how it happened the next time we came. In the second jar, we had two fish. And we got to name the fish. And so, it was kind of fun for the elementary schoolers.
The next time we came to the middle, at the middle school, the next meeting we had, we talked a lot about pH, which is about the acidity in water. And what we had to do is try to make a filtration, a filtration system to try to make the water as safe to drink as possible. It was kind of cool to see how everybody had different ideas and how different everyone could make it. But yet, almost always, it still worked.
Okay, the first time we went to Riverview Elementary, we got to build bridges out of Legos. We got to build bridges out of Legos to see how much they could hold and how physics worked and how gravity worked. So, we built them, but they had to at least be off the ground. There couldn't just be a flat figure on the ground, because that's not even a bridge. So, as we did that, we figured out that people would stand on them, not just bricks. So, that would even test the level at a higher circumstance than just bricks, which are only three pounds each. So, as we kept on building it up, some people had these huge bridges, some people had small bridges. And the smaller the bridges and the closer the support beams are, the stronger it gets. So, that's what most people did. But the people who made them longer and stronger, they could hold more bricks, which would make them stronger, too. And that's pretty much all we did for the first time.
So, the next time we were there, we, we were like, we took, we had to make this sort of like obstacle course, make this marble go down tubes in like record time and see how far it would go. So, we had like all different sorts of tools. We had like foam, foam tubes. And we had like paper towel rolls to, like, make that stuff. We had tape and all that stuff. And we had to time it for, to see how long it took to get down the marble down to the floor. And I think it was really cool how we used all that stuff and made it. It was really fun for all of us.
And you can see, we do have a picture of our fall Stream team, and a good majority of them are right here behind us. A big accolade to our Stream team. We have been invited to participate in the Fourth Annual Fred Tech STEM 16 Summit that will be taking place in April. So, we're very proud to even just have the invite to that. We do have our spring session going on right now. By the way, students had to apply for this. And their applications were screened. We did unfortunately have to turn a few students away, because more people applied than we had space for. But, so we did the second round. A new group of students is working with us in the spring. And again, we have the six sessions, two at each school. And you will get the dates and invites on that as well. So, we hope you'll be able to come out to one of those. Questions or comments from the Stream team while we have them here?
Well, this was wonderful. I have a few comments, and I have one question. I'm a little bit lucky, because a lot of this is on in my district. So, I know the teachers that are fabulous, so wonderful teachers. And I know they're doing a great job. My question was, it's something I really liked about this, and one of the Massaponics students kind of touched on it, is the way you are working with elementary, middle, and high school students all together. And I would like to hear from the young lady over here at Massaponics, how that was working with an elementary student now that you're in high school, because I think there was a lot to be learned from that. I really like that. I think as long as I've been sitting here, I don't think I've ever seen a highlight where we have had all children working together as a group for one cause. You see mentors, and we see that a lot, which we need those programs. But I think this might be the first time I've seen you working as a team for a result. And that is something that I like, and I'd like to see more of it. So, I thought that was so interesting. And I thought of my, my seven-year-olds and my older ones, and how they look up to them as heroes. So, I'm sure the elementary kids really had a ball with this. But I would like to hear from you how that was, to work with little kids on something like this.
Yeah, it was really interesting to see the different ways that their minds work, because us older kids, we usually have more of like a mental set, like we think of things in certain ways. Like, you know, we got a box of tape. And I was thinking, well, we have tape. But the kids saw it as, look, we have a box we can use for different things. And so, they see things in a different way that we usually think of as maybe juvenile, or we just don't see it in that way, because we have like this mental set that, oh, this needs to work in its specific function. But the younger kids don't have those preset ideas. So, they are able to think in a more broad way. And it was really interesting, and it kind of helped me, and I assume the other high school and even middle schoolers, it kind of opened our eyes that there's not just one way to do things. There are multiple ways and solutions to any problem. So, it was nice.
That, that's good. That really was, that really warms my heart. That was, that was interesting to me, too, as you were presenting. And it almost made me not comment on the main thing. I love to see STEM advanced in our county. Since the last, I would say, five years, we've went leaps and bounds. We are on track with this. And this is just another piece of that, getting invited to Fred Tech, starting to show them out there. STEM is important in Spotsylvania County. This is something we are recognizing, I believe. Maybe Miss Schleibel mentioned, or someone mentioned the jobs that are, absolutely. And to the mixture of the girls and boys working together, the different ages, not only is, is where we need to be going, but it also sparks that interest very young in something that years ago, we didn't even look at. So, I appreciate y'all doing this. And before y'all sit down, if, just because I love the kids presenting, if everybody could introduce themselves in their school, you know, well, we know at schools. But I would like to hear their names as well. And we may want to get the other questions first, but maybe before they sit down, so we can recognize you, too.
One other thing, Mrs. Blalock. The beauty of this was three-level. You know, we do the STEM activities. And the other part of that is, we want this to go back into our classrooms, not just an after-school. But that was a big part of it, too, getting that three-level, the collaboration together. And every one of them, as well as myself and the staff, we're learning from all of them at all ages. So, that was part of the dynamics of it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also, I really enjoyed the converse, the, the answer from the young lady from Massaponics. Not only because it was very insightful, but, you know, learning does provide a great paradox. It doesn't always have to be a situation where we learn from those that are supposed to teach. You can also learn from those that are supposed to be the ones learning. So, that was my only comment that I wanted to make. I didn't want to, you know, say everything that Ms. Blalock said, because she captured everything I wanted to say. But I just think that the learning paradox is a great piece that is brought out in that. And I appreciate your comments, young lady.
Mr. Blaine.
These experiences are designed to open doors, and education does that. And I can test that. I tested that out this evening, because I talked to some of the parents that are here of these children. And a couple of them said, "The problem we had when these kids came home, it took them two hours to calm down and relax." And I think that speaks so highly about your accomplishments, because the sparks that you're igniting now, five and 10 years from now, suddenly, it connect with other things. And from that, we get people who go into the space program, and go into technology, and all kinds of different things. So, thanks and congratulations to each one of you, boys and girls.
And before we get your names, I also wanted to say, the, guys, you're doing projects. You're learning by doing. And that, was it more fun? Was that a lot of fun that way? It's, I can imagine it's a lot of fun. So, you're learning, you're doing something, but you're, and you're learning at the same time. That's super cool. I was there when you guys were doing the crime scene, and I had people measuring my foot to see if I was the criminal. Luckily, it wasn't me. But you guys were awesome. But can we go ahead and get everybody's names? And tell us, we know where you went to school, you go to school, but you can tell us anyway.
I'm Ryan Clockley, and I go to Riverview Elementary.
I'm Ethan Foster, and I go to Riverview Elementary.
I'm Gavin Maple, and I go to Riverview Elementary.
My na, my name is Rhett Hillen, and I go to Riverview Elementary.
My name is Yonan Sines, and I go to Riverview Elementary.
My name is Sydney Stahl, and I go to Riverview Elementary.
My name is Joseph Ferguson, and I go to Riverview Elementary.
My name is Rebecca Peters, and I go to Thornburg Middle.
My name is Jacob Downing, and I go to Thornburg Middle School.
My name is Becca Waters, and I go to Riverview Elementary School. And I just have to say that Stream was very amazingly awesome.
My name is Maria Delmonica, and I go to Massaponics High School.
My name is Nimi Singh, and I go to Massaponics High.
My name is Jessica Jones, and I go to Massaponics.
Thank you all very much. It was awesome. Thank you very, very much. Y'all have a great night. Okay, on to item 4.01. Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Miss Shelley. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Virginia School Board's Association has designated February as School Board Appreciation Month. At tonight's meeting, the school board members will be recognized for their hard work and the crucial role they play in our community and schools. Their actions and decisions affect the present and future lives of our children. Board members devote countless hours to help ensure a quality education that will lead our students to success. Board members will receive a certificate of recognition from the Virginia School Boards Association. And before I provide each of our individual board members with the certificate, I'd also like to add to that scripted piece. And, you know, our mission for our school division is to prepare our students for their future. And the first part of that is together. And I'd like to thank the school board for, it talks in here about countless hours and dedication to leading children. But I, I know firsthand, from working with each of you, that you're committed to the students of Spotsylvania County and to the community. And I know that the work that you do as individuals is important. It's valued highly. But I would also like to thank you and make sure that it's acknowledged, that you choose to embrace the influence and the, the power that you can have as a body by embracing teamwork and working collaboratively to make the best decisions on behalf of our students and staff and community. So, I thank you for that. I thank you for your support of myself and our staff. And hope that you have an opportunity to reflect on the many things that you do individually and collectively that make a significant difference in the quality of education in this community. So, I will now call your name, and I'm going to pass down a certificate. And for the audience out there, I guess you could hold your applause until everyone has gotten their certificate. But then, I do think it'd be appropriate to give our, our board a round of applause at that time.
Dr. Baker, is there any money attached to this?
No. But I did provide the little something of the M&amp;M's right there, for each of the board members, gift to say that you do light the way, help to light the way for our students. Mr. William Blaine. Ms. Amanda Blalock. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Well, we've really got a good routine going here. This is good. Mr. Baron Braswell. Ms. Erin Graham. It's a good illustration of servant-oriented leadership. Now, do this one. Mr. Ray Laura. Dr. James Meyer. And Ms. Dawn Shelley. Give our board members a round of applause. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then I will continue. The Virginia School Board's Association designated February 16 through 20 as Board Clerk Appreciation Week. At tonight's meeting, we are honored to recognize the school board clerk, Dr. Dennis Martin, who is not here, but also Deputy Clerk, Ms. Patricia Bowler, for their role in assisting school board members, the superintendent and the school division. And I'm going to also add on that when I first got on the board, they were very helpful, extremely helpful. Ms. Bowler has been a very big blessing since I have taken on this chair position. So, thank you very much. And I'm going to bring you your certificate. Okay, on to 4.03, DECA School-Based Enterprise Certificate Program. Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is my pleasure to share this evening that three of our high schools have been awarded Gold Level Recognition by DECA, an association of marketing students through the School-Based Enterprise Certificate Program. A school-based enterprise is an entrepreneurial operation in a school setting that provides goods and services to meet the needs of the market. School-based enterprises are managed and operated by students as hands-on learning laboratories that integrate national curriculum standards in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. School-based enterprises provide realistic and practical learning experiences that reinforce classroom instruction. Products may include spiritware, food and beverage items, school supplies, signs, banners, and more. School-based enterprises are effective edu- are effective educational tools in helping to prepare students for the transition from school to work or college. For many students, school-based enterprises provide their first work experience. For others, school-based enterprises provide an opportunity to build management, supervision, and leadership skills. The School-Based Enterprise Certificate Program provides recognition for outstanding achievement by school-based enterprises and motivates SBEs to strive for excellence and growth. The program provides school-based enterprises with standards and model operations and recognition at three levels, bronze, silver, and gold. We are proud to say that the school-based enterprises at Cortland High School, Riverbend High School, and Spotsylvania High School have received certification as Gold Level Programs. When I call your name, if you could please come forward to be recognized. From Cortland High School, we have teachers Janay Pins and Terri Palmer. Their students that we would like to recognize are Kyle Pins and Jackson Jones. I don't know if Jackson is here, but for Cortland High School. For Riverbend High School, Kelly Collison, and students Robert Hanberry, Nicole Reeves, and Kyle Traver. And from Spotsylvania High School, we have Bruce Chadwick, teacher, and Devon Tyler, and Emily Bless. And as these students make their way back to the table along with their teachers, if you are a parent or guardian of one of these students being recognized, we'd ask that you please stand so that we may honor your contribution to the success shared this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Ms. Graham asked to have something to say.
I would like to congratulate all three of these lovely DECA programs, but I especially like to congratulate the program from Cortland, since I am a DECA alumni, '96, '97, '98, from these lovely same teachers, Ms. Pins and Ms. Palmer, who are the best DECA teachers ever, and I'd like to congratulate them again.
Congratulations, everyone. Good job. Okay, on to public comments, 5.01, Ms. Bowler.
The public comments segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state their name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time from the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues and that all speakers maintain a level of decorum and mutual respect for one another. The first speaker is Peter Fotenhauer.
Good evening, Chairwoman Shelley, members of the board, Dr. Baker, other members of the administration. My name is Peter Fotenhauer. I'm the president of the Spotsylvania Education Association and a teacher at Ny River Middle School. From what I saw during recognitions, I think we could drop any of you back in a classroom, and you would definitely have some of the routines down. Today was a lot of routine remembering and reinforcing after our snowcation last week, and we are thankful that we were able to enjoy some time off but have decisions made that kept the safety of students and staff first in mind. We will be working hard in the classroom to make sure that the pace of instruction picks up a little bit for the week that we missed, but we've used up all of our snow days that don't require makeup, so I think now you may see teachers starting to say, "Spring needs to spring," and it needs to get here soon, but not by, you couldn't tell it by the temperatures tonight. I had two topics that I wanted to bring up tonight. First was that people may not realize that the federal government is in the process right now of reauthorizing the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, now known as No Child Left Behind, and the House of Representatives will be taking up the bill this week in between dealing with homeland security issues, and they are doubling down on the amount of testing required of states in order to meet federal guidelines under federal law, which is why every year students in Spotsylvania County are mandated to take an SOL test in grades three through eight in reading and math. And the NEA, VEA, and SEA are opposed to this continued emphasis on high-stakes testing that is not yielding measurable results in improving the quality of education, but seems solely focused on just the testing aspect. It has gone out of control. It is not producing results, and I would urge members of the board and the community to contact our elected representatives in Washington and urge them to vote against the reauthorization as it is currently worded. The other issue on your agenda tonight is Read Across America. March 2nd is Dr. Seuss's birthday, and it is tradition in Spotsylvania County that we celebrate that day, as many other schools do all across the nation, with a variety of activities designed to encourage a lifetime love of reading. Mr. Blaine, I know this is one of the subjects near and dear to your heart. Spotsylvania Education Association has once again this year partnered with the Central Rappahannock Regional Library at the Salem Church Branch, and because things are, the actual birthday is on a Tuesday, we're celebrating early this year, and on Saturday, February 28th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., the library will belong to the Cat in the Hat, and there will be a wide variety of Dr. Seuss-themed games and activities for students of all ages. We often think of Read Across America as primarily a elementary or primary-grade event, but reading is a skill that all students, and our parents as well, need to cultivate and keep sharp on, and so there are activities that can appeal to anyone. We are looking forward to having school board members show up. We'd love to have you stop in and take a peek. We'd love to have you email Darcy Caswell, the librarian in charge of the Read Across America event, if you'd like to read. She'd be happy to have you email her and let her know what time you're available to do so, and she can fit you into the schedule as they are trying to schedule the reading room times, and we'd love to see you there as we are hoping that once again over 800 members of the community will come through and participate in some way, shape, or form in our Read Across America activities, and I look forward to you approving the resolution on your agenda tonight, declaring next week Read Across America Week in Spotsylvania County. Thank you very much, and good evening.
Madam Chair, that's all who've signed up. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to us this evening? Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public comments section and move on to the board member comments section, 5.02. Mr. Laura.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to take a special moment to pay tribute to the men and women who worked for the maintenance department here at Spotsylvania School. The last few days that we all, we have all suffered through cold weather, and Mr. Hugaday and Mr. Uppercut, will you mind standing so that everybody knows who you are, and anybody else from your department that might be here tonight? In any event, as everyone knows, Spotsylvania School is the largest tenants in this county, and some of our schools are getting pretty old, but when they get into this kind of weather, it doesn't really matter when the building was built. It requires maintenance, and these folks are my heroes. Because I equate them with firefighters, who you kind of take them for granted until your house is on fire. And this past few days, visiting with Mr. Uppercut earlier today, and he gave me a brief list of some of the emergencies that came up during the week, and I know in my own household, and I'm sure Ms. Graham will tell you what it's like to keep livestock alive during this kind of weather, and it's been rough on all of you. So, from the bottom of my heart, and on behalf of everyone in this county, because I'm sure that I speak for everyone, I thank you for a job well done, and may God bless you and continue to give you health and strength to do a job that's so important for all of us. The other thing I'm going to try to do, Madam Chair, is put together a short comment on tying together Dr. Seuss Read Across America and the budget. I grew up in a time where in my house, I didn't think we got a tele, we didn't get a television until I was probably nine or 10 years old, and then it was a nine-inch, black and white. I remember baseball was only televised, and the All-Star Game and the World Series, and at midnight, the four-channel that existed, used to go off the air, but playing the National Anthem. Well, today we have technology. We walk around with computers and everything else, so reading has become a challenge. But I'm still, I'm a throwback to the old days, and I still read, and I typically read about a book a week, and I'm reading the most fascinating book that I have found this year so far. It's a book about the history of teaching in America, and I'm not going to read a 400-page book to you, but I'll share some of the things in there. According to Dana Goldstein, the author of this great book, there is not a word in the Constitution, the word "education" does not, does not appear anywhere in the Constitution. And so, during colonial time, there was no public education, and in fact, in the early days of this republic, there was no public education. And then in Franklin, Massachusetts, at the beginning of the 19th century, the folks over there came up with this concept of universal public education, and there was lukewarm support for it until a group of anti-tax activists came along and said, "It was too expensive." And so, for the next few years, there was a back and forth about universal public education versus the taxes, and they finally came to a compromise that they would allow in Franklin, Massachusetts, public education as long as the teachers were, they would allow women to work outside the place. So, the teachers would be low-paid teachers or volunteers, and that's how public school got started as a job for women. We got in, 20, 30 years later, a young lady by the name of Susan B. Anthony that we all know became a teacher. Her salary was $110 a year, and she was recruited to be a teacher, and when 12 years later or so, the man who recruited her passed away, they hire a 19-year-old kid to be the principal of the school, because Susan B. Anthony, even though she had close to 12 years of teaching experience as a woman, she could not be a principal. Now, that was 200 years ago. To this day, we still view teaching as a predominantly female profession. In fact, I asked our HR department, how many, what was the percentage of females in our staff, and it's 81%. And when you consider that, pretty much everyone in maintenance is male, and IT and security, all of a sudden, that 81, you know, rises higher. And the other thing is that we have every year hundreds of thousands of hours of volunteer time given by our PTO, PTA, bambooers, and what have you, so that, quite frankly, we haven't changed that much in 200 years. Thank you, ma'am.
Dr. Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This month is Board Appreciation Month, and I'd like to change the table around and say thanks to the staff and recognize the staff for the dinner that was served for us this evening, and truly much appreciated. We actually owe what we do here to you and to the teachers and the staff and the parents. Without you folks, we don't exist. So, with that, I think we really need to turn the tables and say thank you for your support. With that, I yield the floor. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Blalock.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. I too wanted to thank everybody for the recognition tonight, but I agree with Dr. Meyer. We thank you all, and I think it's hard for us as elected officials and public people to accept that, because it truly is. I know, I know the guy sitting beside me, and it's a labor of love for all of us. We enjoy what we do. So, just a couple of things about the snow. I have a lot of questions in my inbox about the SAT. You'll be hearing from that sometime in the near future. We work with the College Board on that. That's not specifically us alone. So, we'll be waiting for that upcoming date. Unfortunately, it was canceled again. The two ti, the two, we just hit, the two SATs hit at the two snow times of the year, so we will get that in for the, for the high schoolers waiting to take the SATs, and there was an interim date change. I hope everyone received that today. I had that pulled up. Has anyone got that off the top of their head so we can just, March 5th now, it will be March 5th, and I think that's the only two things I wanted to make sure the public was aware of. Again, thank you for the recognition, but again, thank you for what you do, and I yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Braswell.
No comment.
Mr. Blaine.
There's a group here in Spotsylvania called the Rappahannock Coral Society, and they have offered and have distributed, I know, information to all of the high schools, a $500 scholarship to one student that will be graduating and intends to follow a music career and plans to study. So, if you know of young people that are interested, the March 31st is the deadline for the application, and they're, both the brochures describing it and the applications are available at each of the high schools, I know. Saturday had a, really a rare opportunity. I was at a place called, let me back up just a minute. We have a, we have a gem here in Spotsylvania, and a lot of people don't know about it. It's a small museum that's housed in the J.J. Wright School. We're celebrating Black History Month this month, and there was a meeting there. They, we, a group of women who organized, they have a chapter called Links Incorporated, and they sponsored an artistic program, and they had a teacher, Mr. James, who actually taught in Spotsylvania School a few years, schools a few years ago. He teaches now at Brook Point, and he had five students there, and their artwork, which was really very interesting. But more important is the setting that's there, and I'd just like to read a statement about the J.J. Wright Museum. It's one of those little gems that I think either people don't know about, or they do know about it, they're not using it, and that concerns me. But they say that "Our mission is to celebrate Spotsylvania by collaborating with like-minded individuals and organizations to collect, archive, share, and facilitate learning about the interactive history of education, cultures, and civic life of the county's African-American citizens. In doing so, we demonstrate how these interactions within the wider population contributed to the richness of Spotsylvania County's development." I was speaking with the president of that group, Reverend Garcia, and he said he was an eighth grader in 1962, and he had to get on the bus from the back end, couldn't get on from the front end, and he never knew where he could sit, and he was telling me a story about that, and after he'd get left off at the end of school day, he said he had usually three or four miles to walk, and he ought to always watch the roads very carefully, and when a car was coming, he ran into the woods to hide until that car passed, and when it passed, then he could walk ahead and run and hurry to the next patch of woods just for self-protection. That's part of American history that I'm familiar with, but not really, you know, and to have an opportunity to talk to people, and we have here in Spotsylvania- And to have an opportunity to talk to people, and we have here in Spotsylvania a lot of people who can share that. And I asked how many visitors they've had, how many schools and so on, visited, because it is Black History Month after all. And the answer, much to my chagrin, was zero. And I'd like to encourage our staff, when you have an opportunity, if you've never been there yourself, take time to go down. They're, they're open every Saturday from 10 till 3:00. All volunteer work, and they're also open Thursday and Friday. And I promised them that I would help get a little PR out for them. Because it's a, just a fascinating place. And it's a part of history that, I grew up in the northwest suburbs of Chicago. And we had probably a 5% minority population. And I remember my mother saying to me when I was on the bus, I was about five years old. I looked at a man, I said, "How come he's so dark, Mom?", or something to that effect. And she slapped my hand. And that's the background, you know, you don't have these kinds of experiences. And I think we have a chance here to, to celebrate Black History Month. Thank you.
Ms. Grant?
I would also like to thank the Maintenance Department. I can attest on Tuesday, when I got done plowing my driveway and my road, I went on over to check on them. At 9:30, it was clear, the fire were working on the fire lanes. Everything was good to go. So they're working really hard, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. Just had a couple of things I wanted to mention. First, for last week, I've gotten some, quite a few emails to say thank you to Dr. Baker and his staff for the decisions that you made last week with the weather. And especially Monday, when the, when the snow came in, it would have been right in the midst of buses leaving all three levels. So I've received quite a few emails and messages saying to say thank you. So I wanted to say that publicly. And then also, just a reminder to the board and anyone watching, tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock, we will be presenting our budget to the Board of Supervisors. So if you can be there, come on out. If not, you can watch it on television. But just as a reminder as well to our board. And that's all I have. Now, and on to 5.03, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. I don't have any additional comments at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. To Special Reports, 6.01, are there any Board Committee reports?
Just, Food Task Force was rescheduled. It happened during last week, so we will inform the board when we reschedule. And Dawn and I attend that. We'll bring back a report.
Okay, on to the Consent Agenda. Ms. Bowler?
On the Consent Agenda this evening are the minutes of the February 2nd Budget Work Session and the February 9th Regular Meeting and donations, which are usual and customary. We ask that the Consent Agenda be approved as presented.
May I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, please?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion for approval.
I will second.
And Mr. Blaine as our second. All those in favor of, of the Consent Agenda? Approval? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, 7-0. Okay, thank you. On to item 8.01, Approval of Revisions to Policy IGDA Student Organizations. Mr. Woff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, good evening, everybody. Student organizations serve a significant role within Spotsylvania County Public Schools. They allow our students an opportunity to develop leadership skills, promote collaboration, and in many cases, rally as a support to the needs of the school and/or our community. The purpose of this proposed policy and regulation change is to provide a clear application process for both renewal of current student organizations and those that wish to establish. It is the administration's recommendation that the School Board waives the customary two-reading approval for a change in policy and approves the changes to Policy IGDA and Regulation IGDAR as presented.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion that we approve and waive the second reading of this motion.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Laura, a second. Second by Mrs. Blaylock. Do we have any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the approval of revisions to Policy IGDA with doing first and second reading this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? 7-0.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to 8.02, Approval of Resolution Supporting Read Across America Day. Ms. Flannard?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Baker, Ms. Bowler. On March 2nd, 2015, Spotsylvania County Public Schools, our students are asked to join millions of their peers across the country to celebrate Dr. Seuss's birthday and the annual, 17th Annual Read Across America Day. It is expected that more than 45 million readers will join this celebration. Our elementary schools will be participating, celebrating Dr. Seuss's birthday with reading activities throughout the week. Many of you will probably be contacted to ask to come read to their schools. So thank you in advance for that. And it is the School Board's recommend, it is the administration's recommendation that the School Board approve the Read Across America Resolution as presented this evening and authorizes the Chair to sign it accordingly.
Thank you, Ms. Flannard. I am going to ask Mr. Blaine to read the resolution.
The resolution is recognizing Read Across America in Spotsylvania County Schools. Whereas Spotsylvania County Public Schools stands firmly behind, committed, firmly committed to promoting reading as a catalyst for our students' future academic success, their preparation for America's jobs of the future, and their ability to compete in a global economy. And whereas, community involvement in the education of our youth, grounded in the principle that educational investment is the key to communities' well-being and long-term quality of life. And whereas, Read Across America, a national celebration of Dr. Seuss's birthday on March 2nd, promotes reading and adult involvement in the education of our community students. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Public School Board calls on the citizens of our county to assure that every child is in a safe place, reading together with a caring adult on the evening of March 2nd, 2015. And be it further resolved that this body endorses Read Across America and recommits our community to engage in programs and activities to make America's children the best readers in the world. Sign, Spotsylvania County Public School Board. Dawn Shelley, Chairman.
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. And a second, please? Mrs. Grant, Ms. Grant? All those in favor of the resolution for Read Across America?
Aye.
Aye. Nene's? 7-0. Thank you. Okay, on to 8.03, Adoption and Purchase of Benchmark Literacy and Writer's Workshop Curriculum. Ms. Blaylock? And Ms. Finley?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Baker and Ms. Bowler. On the heels of Dr. Seuss and Read Across America and our resolution, this comes, this very timely. As you may know, the last adoption of literacy texts for Spotsylvania County Schools was in 2003. Our state adopts textbooks on a seven-year revision cycle aligned with the standards of learning revisions, which was last adopted in 2012. Last spring, we purchased leveled texts and whole-group reading materials from Benchmark Literacy for students in grades 3 through 5. Benchmark Literacy incorporates eBooks, interactive whiteboard resources, and online eresources with PDF files for all teacher support materials to reinforce and extend learning through the use of technology. With both nonfiction and fiction texts, Benchmark Literacy's curriculum supports our goal in developing strategic metacognitive readers. Benchmark Writer's Workshop materials marry reading with writing to support strong, skilled writers and infuse grammar instruction through the authentic context of writing. It is administration's recommendation at this time that the School Board adopts Benchmark Literacy and Writer's Workshop curriculum for K-5 Elementary Language Arts Instruction and utilizes a state contract as a procurement vehicle. Any questions or comments?
I'm going to take a vote, I mean, a motion first. Do I have, Mrs. Blaylock?
Second.
Second by Dr. Meyer. Okay, any questions or comments?
I just, I just would like to make one comment. I think this is a very important step forward. Because it's in the lower grades that if we accomplish our goal of teaching children to read, it carries those children through the 80, 90 years of their lifetime. If we fail to do it when they're third and fourth and third and second grade, they carry that through the rest of their life too. And they're eternally handicapped. So this is a terrific move forward, and I commend you folks for recommending it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm very pleased to vote in support of this motion. As I tried to state earlier, reading is becoming a lost art. Our children are exposed to so much entertainment and distractions. And actually, we as adults have a tough time carving out time just to read. So anything that we can do to encourage reading, this is what's going to make lifelong learner. So thank you.
A public comment of my support.
And I wanted to say as well that last year when we did the vote on, was it 3 through 5? That this was something that the teachers had a say in. That they were, they looked at the program, and they were fully supportive of it. So when you have your, your teachers who are going to be using it, and they know their students, and then it comes to us, that's an easy answer. So thank you. So I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor of benchmark, adoption and purchase of benchmark literacy and writer's workshop? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, those opposed? 7-0. Thank you. Items, informational items, 9.01, 9.02, usual and customary. Thank you. So on to 10.01, Unfinished Business. Is there anything? Okay, item 10.02, Any New Business? There is none. On to item 11.01, Closed Meeting. Be it resolved that the School Board conduct a closed meeting for the following purposes? Consideration of candidates for employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees, or resignation of employees who have contractual commitment to the Board as permitted by 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia. May I have a vote to go into closed session? Dr. Meyer, and a second. Ms. Grant? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now opposed? 7.0, we are in closed session.